Everyone, this is October 3rd. It is 7:03 and I will be calling the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen. Tuesday, October 30, 2023, the regular meeting, and it will be in person and virtually here at the Town Hall. At this time, call the order. Most people are familiar with Town Hall and know what the facilities are and know where the exits are. Part of the ladies' room is out of order at the evening. I already said that. So at this time, I will be opening the agenda with the Board's permission. We have one resignation from the Veterans Commission, and we have for you this evening, a possible appointment with your approval. So at this time, I would like to tell you, please rise and take form. Thank you. At this time, it is public comment time, and we, that's the board, put comment that many boards practice, and that is listening to the members of the public. It is very important to us. We would ask that you limit your comments to under three minutes, and that understand that the Board does not interact with this part of the agenda. So if you have something to say, we will make note of it, and we will either decide to take it up at a future meeting, or we will be in contact with you. If so request, if there's something that we can help you with. So thank you very much. Who would like to come go first?
Cheryl.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl, we'll come to you next. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Cheryl Uden. My address is 31 Keeney Drive. My issue, once again, is voting in a religious building. It was supposed to be a temporary thing. I was told it has been more permanent than temporary. Now, the town has two districts, and the understanding that we're going to be voting both districts in one place, and that's at the Parish Hall at St. Maurice's again. I wonder if the town has a plan for offering the schools to get them to close the schools for the day. A lot of towns do that. I know we don't pay St. Maurice's for the use of the hall, but we do barter by having some service done by our staff people over there. So I, my question is, and my concern is, why can't we use school to have? We have two schools, two districts, and they're not, they're part of the town. They're not part of a religious venue.
Thank you, Cheryl. If you'd like to call Selectmen's office, we can give you some further information. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are you finished, ma'am?
I'm, I'm finished. I thought I'd get some kind of feedback here, but I guess I, who do I call? I mean, I call, I talk to Kathleen?
You can call and talk to Jim, and he will explain the situation to you. Jim Rupert. Or you can call the registrar voters. You have a choice there also. Thank you.
Well, I'm talking to the registrar voter.
Very good. Thank you very much. And next, Eleanor Georges?
Hello, I'm Eleanor Georges, and I am a former member of the COVID Charter Commission Committee. And I'm here to talk about the need to increase the pay of and the benefits for the first selectmen. Our new charter is going to go into effect after the November elections. In that charter, Bolton has the opportunity for a stronger first selectman position, actually a CEO for Bolton. The decision-making duties of this position are ready for expansion, and we need an increase in salary and extension of benefits for the next, for the next first selectmen. We also extended the first selectmen's terms to four years, and his salary needs to be on par with the hired personnel of this town, who are also in strong positions. The executive leadership from our elected first selectmen should be that of a CEO. While our town manager's duties remain relatively unchanged, their position is a hired one, as are both the superintendents of schools in Bolton. As an elected official answering to the citizens of Bolton, our first selectmen has a strong platform for decision-making on behalf of the town, and we need to support that role by adequate compensation for pay on the job. As an executive leader, a CEO for Bolton, our new strong leader will necessarily be guiding the town administrator, who's hired, and the superintendent of schools, who are also hired in serving the town of Bolton. Across this great country and in our state of Connecticut, we see bureaucracy taking over government for and by the people. The intent of the members of the Charter Commission in building a strong CEO stance for our elected first selectmen was to hold the bureaucracy at bay and get town decision-making into the hands of a CEO that is elected. For this reason, we ask that the pay be compensatory and benefits be extended.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Would you like to go next? Jim, good evening.
I'm Jim Aldrich, Hanover Farm Road, speaking the same issue. I was speaking tonight to request that you significantly increase the pay for the new incoming first selectmen, the chief executive officer, the CEO of Bolton's government. As we get ready to elect a new CEO, we all know there are major challenges on the horizon. This past referendum, the town was very fortunate to get a budget passed with a 10.2% tax increase on the first referendum. Not sure going forward, the taxpayers can afford to be that generous. For most residents, their pay or social security increases are much less. The burdens of rampant inflation are eroding their ability to pay for continued high tax increases. Regulatory obstacles to build and improve businesses in Connecticut are becoming more onerous, causing many companies to stop expanding here and move elsewhere. That has reduced investments in the growth rate in the town tax base. The town knows that school bus drivers' contract is due next year, and that the bus drivers want raises much greater than the 2% inflation the federal government seeks for stability of the economy. Other town unions may have similar needs. As a reference, right now, the United Auto Workers are striking to get a 40% wage increase in a four-day work week. Other strikes are becoming more common. Resolving many of the growing municipal issues are the domain of elected officials, not the town administrator or the superintendent of schools who are running the day-to-day operations. The selectmen and education leaders, however, need to find a balance between the needs of government and the ability of the community to pay for it. As the elected boards navigate a positive path forward, the key to their success will be driven by the executive leadership of first selectmen that has limited powers. The key to the CEO's success is the willingness to commit much more time, to become more knowledgeable, and to recognize and appreciate all the different perspectives of the staff, the boards, and other stakeholders. The first selectmen needs to share this knowledge with his boards, and using the power of persuasion and collaboration, build a consensus to enact and implement good public policy. The new first selectmen we will elect has no prior experience on the board. There's a telling statement that no one with prior experience on the selectmen's board is willing to run for the top office. We are thankful, however, that many of you are willing to remain in the arena, to stay and assist the new leader if you are elected. I implore you to give Amanda or Rod a chance to succeed. Give the new first selectmen a reasonable pay package that allows him to put in the requisite amount of time to get the job done. The current pay of approximately $16,000 per year is woefully unacceptable. Before your time is up in November, please implement an improved pay package. Now is the time to increase the pay package for the first selectmen's position. If you don't do this, it won't get done.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Richard Hayes, Vernon Road.
Good evening.
The American democracy is built on the premise that government is by the people, of the people, and for the people. This means that the leader of the government, in this case, in Bolton, the first selectmen, the chief executive officer, is a citizen of the town, not a career government employee. The foundation of American democracy is the principle of limited government and maximum liberty. Bolton continues this time-honored system with a new charter. Bolton has not taken the path of the big cities by empowering a town manager, a career government bureaucrat to be the leader. We have all witnessed how our major cities are becoming less prosperous, and as they do, the power of the central government led by the town manager grows. Bolton did not choose to have the government, have a government of the government, by the government, and for the government. This is illuminated by the alarming trend of the one-party governance in urban areas today. Bolton has made a conscious decision to reject that path. To leave Bolton's government, the first selectmen has limited power, and the new charter contemplates more power. But the power will come from working long hours, exerting more energy, and having a leader with great communication skills. Additionally, the first selectmen now has a extended term of four years in order to implement their goals. It should be noted that the first selectmen's role does not diminish the job of the town administrator. Rather, it allows the town administrator to lead the day-by-day operations of the town, while the first selectmen focuses and navigates on the political process, the community outreach, and the setting of long-term, of the long-term direction of the town in consultation with other elected officials. For the last year in office, I'm sorry, excuse me, for the first year in office, and maybe longer, the first selectmen will need to partner with the town administrator to learn not only the selectmen's job, but also the town administrator's job. That skill set will also prove to be critical and requisite knowledge if the town administrator decides to seek employment elsewhere. And the first selectmen must become the mentor for the next new hire. To do this job, the first selectmen will need to work many hours. The current pay, at best, is a couple of dollars an hour, and that's just not reasonable. So the time has come to change the pay for the new leader. It's not fair to ask the two candidates running for this, for the first selectmen's office, to give themselves a raise. You can understand this because you, this board, are all prime examples of people that have done so very much for so very many years for the community and not asked for anything in return. The candidates running for first selectmen's position are of similar mindset, I believe. The time has come to widen our net and encourage future talented leaders to choose to be candidates for this most critical leadership role. Not only is the time significantly boosted, now there's an only time significantly boosted the pay and the benefit package for first selectmen, there will never be a more opportune time to enact this pay increase, given that no current member of the Board of Selectmen is running for first selectmen. Please consider acting on this at your next regularly scheduled meeting. To further convince you, I'm just going to give you a couple of handouts here tonight that give you some comparable salaries, information for other communities in the, in the state of Connecticut. I've taken the liberty to highlight a few of them, and and one other thing, we're always being compared to Framby's, so that wasn't included in the list that I had downloaded from the internet, so I took the liberty of doing a little additional research and giving you their salary as well. So with all that said, I thank you for your attention and your patience this evening and for considering our request.
For those people online, thank you, Mr. Hayes. For those people online, two handouts have been given to us, and we will make sure that they are presented to the public. Good evening. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, William Anderson, 77 French Road. So I support an increase in the compensation of the first selectmen's position. I'm not going to mention a figure, but as an example, it could be tied to some sort of benchmark. So it moves over time. My example is equal to X times the lowest paid full-time employee, as an example. Could be 0.5X, 1X, 2X, just an example. The benefits of doing so, I think, are greater than the additional cost to the town's budget. It will increase the pool of qualified potential candidates. And this has said, has been said before, but I'll say it again. Now is the time to do it, as there is no conflict of interest in self-dealing with the incumbent board, as no board member is running for the position. It is difficult to expect more from many of the board members across our boards in town as they give their time with little or no compensation. We should expect more from an adequately paid first selectmen. As a fiscally conservative individual, I do not take this topic lightly, and in no way am I suggesting that the current or previously elected first selectmen were inadequate. Do not, those are not my words. We, the people of Bolton, have been fortunate in our leadership, but I see difficulties going forward, and I would rather be proactive now than reactive later. Unfortunately, due to the ever-increasing regulations at all levels, local, state, and federal, the job of first selectmen is also becoming more difficult and complex. I have a 12-year-old daughter in the Bolton school system, so as an example, we have a busing problem in town. Connecticut General Statutes, Section 10-184, Duties of Parents, School Attendance Age Requirements. All parents and those who have cared children, and I paraphrased, I chopped out a bunch of irrelevant text. Each parent or other person having control of a child five years, five years of age or over and under 18 years of age shall cause such child to attend a public school regularly during the hours and terms the public school, the districts in which child resides.
Mr. Anderson, could you relate this to the Board's Selectmen case?
This is my example. Yes, I, yeah, it will, it will get tied in. Yes, I will. Again, Connecticut General Statutes, each day's failure on the part of a person to comply with any provision of the section above shall be a distinct offense punishable by a fine not exceeding $25. So we're very close in the general statute to including bus drivers and bus companies to be fined for not getting kids to school on time. I don't know if you know what's happening, but they're short a bus driver. They send the bus out, get a load of kids, drop them off, and then they send that bus out a second time. Every child on that bus is late to school. The parents of children in the school system received a warning email from the superintendent of schools that the Bolton school bus drivers might strike in support of the striking commentary. They did not. But the lack of employee, employed bus drivers for the company that provides busing services is unacceptable. And to your point, an appropriately compensated first selectmen should be involved in the solution. This is, you know, there's so many duties, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be done now. This is just a very broad topic, a lot of responsibilities. Some of the solutions would be such as working with state's legislator to add verbiage to the statute to include the bus drivers and the bus companies responsible for getting the kids to school on time. Having knowledge of the contract with the bus company to see if a strike while under existing contract is even permissible. We got that email, and it said they might strike in support, but I mean, I would assume their contract would prevent them from striking while they're under a contract. It would have been nice if someone clarified that.
Mr. Anderson, your time is almost up.
Thank you for the warning. One paragraph left. I advocate an increase in the compensation for the first selectmen of town of Bolton. I think it's safe to say that neither party had a line of candidates looking for the nomination. If it, if it makes it easier, put a sunset provision on the decision with measurable outcome, so it is easy to remove if there is no difference in the outcome. The next time both parties nominate candidates for first selectmen, they should have multiple candidates to choose from. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you for the evening, Senator. Good evening.
State Word's Vicki, Meadow Road. I too am in favor of raising the pay for the first selectmen. The past 20 years have been positive times for our government at all levels, federal, state, and municipal budgets have kept up with inflation and growth in population. Unfortunately, as the state and federal spending has gone up, state and federal funding for municipal government has not kept up. The state no longer pays for the state police in Bolton, and other programs in education, cost-sharing grants for our local school system have not kept up with inflation. On top of, the government has failed to rein in federal spending, even though tax revenues to the federal government are at an all-time high. I recommend you go online and check out www.sdebtclock.org to confirm this. From the website, you'll see the federal revenue is $4.3 trillion. Federal spending is $6.1 trillion. The federal debt is $33.1 trillion. To salvage some balance, the federal government is printing over $1.8 trillion a year, and they must pay interest on a debt of $33.1 trillion. And at the current higher rates of 5%, that's an additional $1 trillion of money that the Treasury needs to print per year to cover interest costs. This is unsustainable. To ensure that municipal government gets its fair share of the federal and state spending, management of the town, the first selectmen, needs to be that voice. We need to seek additional revenue from the state of Connecticut as our payments have been stagnant. This year, the town voted to have a 10.2% increase in taxes. I'm sure next year, the town will be able to get that kind of increase. People want to support local government, but government needs to live within the means of the community's ability to pay for it. We are forcing our seniors to decide if they can stay in this town, and there should be no reason the town of Bolton should have one of the highest mill rates in the state of Connecticut. One thing is for certain, when people vote, they are voting for a first selectmen. It has a perspective on this issue. And if they elect this person, they want to know that the first selectmen will do what they say they would. To give the first selectmen a chance to succeed, you need to pay them a fair amount of money in a reasonable benefit package. The current board has been very experienced people on it. Your successor is being asked to take on more duties, to work four years instead of two, and you're asked to lead at a time when our country has an enormous financial challenge. Please restructure the pay and the benefits of a first selectmen now, so this person can succeed. Thank you.
So online, we also have the chief of our fire department, the legal district attorney. Would you like to address the board this evening?
I would like that opportunity, Madam Selectman. Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Thanks, sir. Please proceed.
My name is Bruce Dixon, 72 Tinker Pond Road. I'm also act as your fire chief in town for 11 years. The senior, tonight for information only, the senior leadership of your volunteer fire department have had continued conversation with the town administrator about the future of the fire service in Bolton. As several of the senior members that respond to emergencies during the day are getting older, and as they have plans to retire out, there will be a potential void in our membership response. We have collectively had discussion about having a strategic plan from a company that is well-versed in these studies. The goal is to look at what the town currently has and give us options going forward that would best suit the safety needs of our community. One option that continues to come up is to add some paid staff to handle emergencies during the day, as well as being tasked to handle a lot of the in-house maintenance associated with a firehouse building operation and detailed fire, rescue, and medical equipment and vehicle checks that have to be performed on an on-time basis. This additional staff should report to the fire chief. The compensation for the chief that is in place now will not be enough for the town to attract a qualified individual. As a point of interest, after a look at local budgets, comparing the fire budgets of Manchester and Bolton strictly on a cost-per-person basis, the town of Manchester cost is approximately $420 per person. The town of Bolton cost per person for emergency services, fire department, is approximately $50 per person. I will report back to you, the selectmen, as conversations continue. There is additional information that will assist you in your decisions going forward for the safety of the citizens and property in our town. Thank you very much.
Chief Dixon, thank you very much for your comments, and thank you very much for your service to this town. We're very grateful. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Mr. Lord? Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Lursch, Brookfield Road. We're spending a lot of money here. I think the town could do a better job on handling its, its inventory of buildings and everything else. I think this Town Hall, as I have said before, is obsolete and, and beyond its life. I think the town should seriously consider about a new Town Hall, preferably down where the old elementary school is. I think it would add a lot of functionality and safety to the operation. I think it's an important factor that always seems to be overlooked. It seems like we take care of schools and fire trucks and everything else first, but this building certainly needs some love and attention too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Good evening. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Anybody else online that'd like to speak this evening? Very good. Thank you very much. This evening, our board clerk, Linda, good evening, and thank you for your service, ma'am, for all you do, taking care of us. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on. And I would like to ask for approval of the minutes. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. You're welcome to stay. Gosh, that didn't work. Thank you, everybody. Back, back, back for you.
I'll move to accept this September 5th regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. DePietro. We have a motion on the table. I would like a second, please. Like, I mean, a second. Thank you. Having, have a first, having a motion and a second, comments on the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Yes.
Mr. Teller, you have a floor?
I think it's, actually, no, sorry, it's the other ones, so not on these.
If there's no question to pour it, then I will call for the vote. All in favor accepting the minutes of September 5th, 2023, to say aye.
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 Aye, the four yeses and one absent. Mr. Moore is out of the country. Going through September 14th, do I have a motion to accept the minutes for the special meeting?
Take the motion.
Thank you, Michael. And a second, please.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. And questions or changes, Mr. Teller?
Yes, on page three of three, no, two of three, sorry. A little bit farther than halfway down, remarks that I made, that sentence, the last sentence should read, "He noted plans do not show an island at the end of the cul-de-sac." The, the plans, and I'm referring to the subdivision plan.
Thank you for that correction. Anything else, sir?
Yeah.
That makes, that's a very important correction.
Yeah, I should say. The second paragraph from the bottom equals second sentence.
In reference?
In reference to the Enrico, to Enrico and the subdivision map, he does not see how that unimproved, unimproved portion of the road is separated out and described differently in the deed. So add "of the road" after unimproved. Thank you. And actually, it should be unimproved, unimproved portion of the road abutting the piano property is, no, not the piano property, the Pajoli property. So let me read that again. He does not see how that unimproved portion of the road abutting the Pete Pajoli family is separated out and described differently on the deed.
With no objections?
And the, one more.
Okay.
In the first sentence, after the word spur, that should read, "the spur to the piano."
What section do you want?
Same paragraph.
The same paragraph. First sentence after the word spur.
Adam Teller says he reads it differently, so fish mash, so it's got it.
It should read, "the spur to the piano property." Because there were two different stubs that we were talking about. One was to the piano property, one was to the Pajoli property, and they were treated differently in the deed. So just to make sure that that clarity is held.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
I would also restore the reference to the executive session being on the agenda, because it was on the agenda, and instead of crossing it out, simply note that it was not held.
Are there any objections to those corrections?
Nope.
I would like to say thank you very much to Linda for all the hard work that she put in on this, because it was a very complicated issue, and it was a lot of work on her part to put this together, and we appreciate, Mr. Teller, your additions and corrections. Are there any further additions or corrections? Hearing none, I will call for the Hearing none, I will call for the
We do have a motion.
Thank you. Motion, motion is made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, and it is four yeses and one absent, again, Mr. Moore. Then I would entertain a motion to accept the minute, the minutes of the special AP meeting on the nineteenth of September. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Teller, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aramita. Any corrections or changes that you would like to make to that particular minute, the set of minutes?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Four yeses and one absent. And the twenty-seventh of September, the special meeting, may I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
Mr. Teller moves, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aramita. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the, call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, there are four yeses and one absence. Thank you. This time, I have asked to open the agenda, and it would be to add C, and that would be for the resignation of Alan Dumas from the Veterans Commission, and D for, to approve the appointment of Linda Rudolph to the Veterans Commission. So we'll start at the beginning, please. A is Corinda Hawke. Would I please, could I just have a motion to move her from the alternate to a full member of the senior commission with term ending seven, one, twenty twenty-seven? May I have a motion, please?
Soon.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. DePietro and a second by Mr. Moore, I mean, Mr. Aramita. Are there any comments? Well, I would like to add just that one, and thank her for her service to the senior commission. It's valuable, and we appreciate her time and effort. At this time, then, I would call for a vote. If there's no comments, please, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, there are four yeses and one absent. Going on to Patrice Nowinski, to appoint to, as a, to the alternate for the senior commission for the term ending twenty twenty-seven, one, twenty twenty-six. Could I have a motion to accept that, please?
Oh, so moved.
Thank you, Mike, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Adam Teller, seconds. Are there any comments? I would just like to say thank you to Patrice for stepping forward. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four yeses and one absent. At this time, C would be to accept the resignation and thank him for his service, Alan Dumas, who has moved south and is no longer living in town, has sold his home. We will miss his service, and he was a veteran of high standing, and we are glad to have him serve for the time that he did. At this time, could I have a motion to accept the resignation?
His first name Alex or?
I think it's Alex. My apologies. I'm sorry, Mr. Aramita, motions and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Teller, for Alex Dumas. If there are no further comments, I would ask for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four yeses and one absent. At this time, I hope you're all able to receive the paperwork for Linda Rudolph.
That came in very late.
It came in very late, but they have a meeting this week, so we're trying to get things.
Yeah, that, we didn't, that came in too late to get out.
So.
You're the only one that has it.
Oh, I'm the only one that has it coming. Well, I'm on the place, please stand at ease. And we are back in session. So we received from Linda Rudolph, she's a town resident at seventy-five Clark Road, that she has an interest, her party affiliation is Democrat, she's interested in serving the Veterans Commission. She was, I'm sorry about that, she was an eight-year active member of active duty with the United States Navy, twenty-five years as a flight attendant and worked in customer service.
I think I did receive that email just sometime this afternoon.
I did too, yes.
Good, I did ask, but doesn't make press for our guest, and she appreciated the opportunity to serve at this Veterans Commission for Bolton. And I will give one hundred percent of my time and consideration to all that is asked of me. I truly believe in making a better life for veterans and their families because they deserve it. And it was signed nine twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. I know her, and we appreciate her service to our country and her interest to step forward and serve. Could I have a motion, please, to accept? Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. DePietro, moves and a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Aramita, seconds. Any comments or?
No, although we actually didn't vote to put these on the agenda, but that's okay.
I use the chairman's prerogative, Mr. Tom. To set the agenda, my apologies.
It's like, is nobody F O I A's? Yeah, I, I have no objection to the vote.
Thank you. Oops, I appreciate the consideration. Having said that, then I will ask for the vote. All in favor of accepting Linda Rudolph as a member of the Veterans Commission, please say aye. Aye, it's four yeses and one, one absent. Moving on to correspondence, and you've got renaming the cave in Bolton Notch that has a long history of having a and there is some record of it, of a marriage between an Indian woman who is believed to be a princess and a Dutch trader. And it was believed that they were, for a time, in fear of their lives, and they were staying at a cave at Bolton Notch on the north side. And I am very thankful to Mr. Hardy, and who has worked with me on this issue, and also for taking me on a very slippery walk up the hill, straight up. And we, so I have been able to see the, the site in past years, and I've not done it recently. But anyway, that's a very special site, and it was important. I asked for the support from Mr. Hardy and to get this started because we have interest by the DOT on Bolton Notch, and it was important to me that the historical site there should be noted by the state. And the state has a reason, I believe, to be very sensitive to Native American issues. And so we started the process. At this time, we have before us a comment from the Bolton Conservation Commission Chair, Rod Farley, that the commission unanimously voted to rename the Bolton Notch Park. But it's also the discussion is out there for us to talk about as a board to lend support to the name change for the historic cave. At this time, I would open the, open the floor for discussions.
Oh, good, well, I would make motion that we accept the proposed change of the new name to one in the tunnel cave.
It is, it is not our, Mr. DePietro, if I might just one moment, sir, I appreciate the motion. It would, if you would add the word to support, because it is not under our purview to change the name, it is under the state's purview. And there's a special process that that has to go through, but if we could lend us support as the board of selectmen, you could add that word to your motion, sir.
Yes. Go ahead, I will.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael. Any comments by the board, Mr. Teller?
I support this. I think I've read the report from the original proponent of the name, and it makes a lot of sense to get rid of a name that's pejorative and substitute a name that's historic.
I believe that it, I would like to have both names, the Dutch trader's name on there as well, but at this time, I will be supporting it as the motion is before us. So at this time, is there any further comment? Hearing none, because we have a motion before us to support the name change by the state of Connecticut. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four yeses and one absent. Thank you very much for that. Now going on to new business, we need to schedule a three-board meeting, not before October one, and not later than eleven fifteen. Do we have a druthers by the board? What would you like to do? Who wants to jump forward here, guys? We're so glad you're stepping forward, Mr. Teller.
Kathy gave us a list of possible dates. Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, Thursday, October twenty-sixth, Wednesday, November first, and Thursday, November second.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, the point, the point, the point is at the end of November.
Week after the election.
Uh, the fifteenth.
As long as it's before the fifteenth.
Because the fifteenth is be when the new board is seated.
Right. Well, I'm not very available the last week of October, so that last week, for various reasons. That last full week of October.
What was the two in?
November, she had November first and November second.
Ladies and gentlemen, sometimes this is the hardest part of our schedule. We have a very dedicated board, and they all try to be very active, and we're very proud of that. November first would be a Wednesday, and the second would be a Thursday. Would that be of interest to the board?
Yes.
Would I make a proposal then that we set it for the first of November?
I can live with it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Teller. I'm glad you could live with it. Do I hear any, oh, put the change the, the wording, do I hear an objection to November first? Hearing none, we will set the date for November first for the three-board meeting and make a proposal to the other boards. Thank you, guys. We're going to count them. Including other members here, Mr. Clark, November first.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Yes, you're fine. Thank you. And we don't interact with the audience, he's a board member. Moving on to B, thank you very much, bid waiver for the Bolton Center School Fire Panel Replacement, informational only, Mr. Rupert, would you take the floor, please?
Right, we don't, we don't have to act on this, but according to our bid ordinance, the Board of Education has to inform us. Something I think that we need to work on here, probably after the new board gets seated, is we really need to look at changing that bid ordinance. Currently, the way the language is written, it does not allow us to not waive bids if we buy off a buying consortium that's approved by the Board of Selectmen or the state bid list. Right now, those are not options for us as the, as the ordinance is written. So that's something that we should be looking forward to in the future.
But, but we do do it currently.
We, we do it, but we try to follow that up with bid waivers so that we're not getting written up by the auditor.
Are there any, are you, Mr. Aramita, do you have a further question?
No, I, I think it's appropriate. When, when we were researching equipment for the brush truck and, and all of those things, we searched out buying consortiums to get the best prices, and many times, they're, they're better than the bids would have been.
Thank you for that effort, and thank you to Chief Dixon also. Is there any further questions that we have for Mr. Rupert on the, that particular issue? Hearing none, then we will move on to number seven, A, Properties and Facilities Administrative Report. The temporary building is the first one, and we have exciting news for mid-October. And I would like to thank members of the community who have been very watchful of the property as it's going forward. A special thank you to Ms. Gordon for making contact the other day when there was a question, and she was very helpful. Mr. Rupert?
So as our first selectman alluded to, the building is scheduled to be delivered October sixteenth. You know, I believe the building will be ready, like, however, the, you know, the weather is probably going to be a factor. Weather has not been cooperating all summer. So that, that is the hope. I have a, a communication out to Will Scott to find out what kind of interruptions that's going to cause for our staff and visitors to the senior center that day so that we can be prepared for that and try to minimize that as much as possible. They will then follow up once the three separate sections are set. They will put them together, they will seam the roof, and then they will begin to install skirting around the outside. And we are working very hard to schedule our subcontractors to get electricity and water and septic and internet and telephone. We need to get the, you know, facility utilities hooked up. And I think we shared with you early on that we were going to be responsible. We decided to take on the responsibility ourselves to get two sets of stairs and a ramp installed. The buildings and grounds leaders and myself have had several conversations with about that. We have a plan. But all of this is going to take time, and again, some of these activities, because they involve digging, are going to be weather dependent. But our hope is really to get this done as quickly as we can so that we can eliminate having people in the Knoxville Municipal Center, we can eliminate the electric and heating costs of that section of the building as soon as possible.
And that will be a great savings in the board finance, I'm sure they'd throw, as will Mr. Teller when he's looking at.
The electric.
Electric, yeah, his favorite. Is there any questions for Mr. Rupert on this particular item? There is no, there is no funny business going on with the decoration of it. I just, there's been a lot of good humor that's gone on around how to decorate it, but it's very serious, and so thank you for all that have enjoyed the moment in time. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. DePietro?
Yeah, Joe, not being a pain here, but
You?
I was under the impression that September twenty ninth, that building was going to be delivered. Can you share with us why it was late?
Yes, I can. So we, we got what was supposed to be final layout of the building, and it was wrong. And so we had to go back, so Mr. Butromovich and I actually went and made a visit to Will Scott up in Middletown, and we made those corrections, and we finally, we finally got them to make the changes that we had been asking for all along.
I'd like to say a very special thank you to both the gentlemen because this has been ongoing. They have been keenly observing the process, and they wanted to make sure it was absolutely perfect before it got started, and we didn't have to have some problems heading forward. I think with Mr. Rupert's building background and with Mr. Butromovich's understanding of town buildings and needs of the space, we were very well served to actually postponing it and getting it done right. But thank you for the good question, Mr. DePietro.
Chief Dixon, this is.
We don't usually, and but with Mr. Dixon, is there a fire question, sir?
That would be the question. I posed that to Jim Rupert, Town Administrator, Fire Marshal. Is the fire protection system going to be included in that building also, sir, with a knox box? I'll, I'll stop my comment there.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, and that's something, if you'd like, please call him in the future on that issue, please do. Any further questions? Mr. Teller? Hearing none? Thank you very much, and again, thank you to everyone that's been very instrumental in getting this done and sort of Mr. Rupert's effort in shepherding it forward. The connectivity trail, this board moved to ask for assistance by landi construction as we were moving forward and trying to get some of the other pieces. As you know, and if you've seen the signage, we have paving that's going on if we don't get so much more rain. Williams Road is just about to begun, begin, and it's quite making this higher as the board did. We were able to move forward with the essential paving before the weather turns the wrong way. As you know, most paving should be done above fifty degrees. Mr. Rupert, do you have anything to add about the connectivity trail?
They were hoping to start this week, you know, get on it and get it done, but unfortunately, again, rain has hampered their efforts. They're trying to get other things planned up in their schedules so they get here. Our highway foreman reached out to the contractor this week, and it is his sincere hope that they can get here next week. And his goal is to get his crew out here and get on it and try to get it completed within a week, once they get started.
Any questions for Mr. Rupert?
Yeah, Jim, I don't, again, I don't mean to be a pain to you, but did we already pay, pay him, Landy? Landy?
So we, we agreed on paying him for a portion of the work. Uh, which was to actually install the piping and the catch basin structures. And we, at the last, uh, at the last meeting when we acted on this, we increased his contract to include the rest of the trail itself. So from where our staff left off, all the way over to Notch Road.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, but it does make me sleep in it there.
What's your concern? Do you have further concerns, sir?
It seems like it's taking too long, not big enough priority for my perspective.
Taken too long, but I didn't understand that.
It's part, it's priority, it's concerned about the priority.
So, Bob, i- it is a priority. I wanted this project done before school started. Uh, unfortunately, w- we're not able to control the weather. And if, if you've been watching the news, this has been the reddest, wettest summer on record with over thirteen inches of rain last month alone. That, that, that really severely hampers our efforts. Um, we, we can't work on it in the rain and after the rain, uh, we have to let it dry out before we can get in there. Otherwise, we'll just sink machines and make a mess. Th- this truly is a priority. That, this grant has been hanging out there since two thousand and sixteen. This, the grant, the grant had gone stagnant. Uh, I managed, I managed to actually get, get it reactivated, complete the steps that were necessary, get the funding. We received the funding and we are moving this forward with all due haste.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Well, no further questions. We'll move on to the library patio and that is again, it's a project that was time sensitive because of the timing of the grants that had to, so it had to be done. We dodging the rain, dodging all those projects, pro- processes that slowed it way down as well. But I would like to, uh, lot the, um, uh, the town crew and the buildings and grounds crew, because they've worked in a united fashion on both of these projects, uh, particularly the patio project. It is, I think, everything many of us in government have wanted to see. And that is cooperation between those departments to be moving things forward. Where we have certain skill sets, where we have certain manpower, where we have certain equipment that can be shared. So, um, the patio is looking lovely. It's aging in place. Uh, uh, and then it needs, um, some, uh, work around its edging. Uh, and the library staff is very, very excited. Mr. Rupert, anything to add?
I, I will say that, you know, we completed the grant deliverables by the deadline, which was the end of September. And again, we're just waiting for the earth to dry out a little bit so that we can finalize landscaping around it. Uh, I, I think it's an exciting project. And I think, you know, it, it is going to be a positive aspect, uh, for the library and their programmings. We, we've managed to complete one enhancement, which was to provide an outlet out there for them so that they can use that when they're doing their programming. And I know they have ideas for other enhancements, uh, over time and we'll, we'll try to meet those if we can.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, then thank you very much, Mr. Rupert, for all your effort on that. And please extend from the first selectman. Uh, thanks to the two departments for working in it.
Absolutely.
Uh, we move on to see the twenty-four budget report. You've all received it in your packet and I wondered if there are any questions that you would like to, uh, extend? Mr. Teller?
No. None of the budget, just on.
Ah, come on. We don't need to accept it.
The thing we have to act on is the AP report. And we have no budget transfers. You already saw the budget transfer from the school.
So we have taken care of.
Oh, sorry, no budget transfers, period.
C and D, and we move on to the AP report. So at this time, um, we can ask questions on the report. I will take it. Uh, any questions from Mr. Teller who wants to talk about electricity?
And I looked at it and I didn't think anybody was going to have any questions today.
Page six.
There you go. Make us work.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars for body repairs on an insurance claim, because we have an, an explanation for that.
Uh, there was an incident with a fire truck and that we got a check. So we've paid the bill minus our deductible.
And the incident was somebody's fault or was it a third party's fault? Was it a?
I don't think he's here.
Would, would you like me to answer the question?
Uh, yes.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Yes.
It was a piece of equipment returning from a call and, uh, backing into the station. And there were, uh, it was dark late at night. Uh, the, the individual didn't have a spotter. There was nobody to spot for him. And he bumped the other truck. Luckily, there were no damage to the other truck. But it doesn't take more than breaking a signal light on a two million dollar piece of apparatus to cost that kind of money. But it did do some significant damage even at a mile an hour. Cause you're, you got eighty thousand pounds pushing and it doesn't stop real quick. So it, uh, it's an unfortunate thing, but it's, um, it's a fact of having uh, limited personnel and, you know, you could sit there all night and hope somebody comes by to help you back in or you're back in by yourself. It's the, the nature of a volunteer fire department when there aren't a lot of people.
And we have a very small space. Would you agree, Mr. Darmian?
Absolutely. Yeah, they, uh, yes. What?
Bob?
I just wonder whether he got the ball about was.
I think it was a thousand dollars.
Okay. Then I'll move to accept the AP report.
I'll second.
But I, at this time, I'll ask for further questions. We have a motion and seconded, Mr. Teller.
I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else have any further questions? Hearing none, then I will ask for, uh, the vote. All in favor, please say aye to accept the AP report as presented.
Aye.
Aye.
Four yeses and with one answer. Thank you very much. Moving on to the selectmen, first selectman's report. Uh, one of the things that we've been working on, uh, in our effort to continue our process of finding ways to make government appear and seem and actually be more open is to put on the town website a spot for, uh, show where grants are being applied for. Uh, grants that have been not received, uh, and those grants that have been received. So we're very excited to be able to put that forward. Um, uh, and also we have, uh, exciting news that we have received the, uh, five hundred thousand dollars or will be receiving five hundred thousand dollars from the state of Connecticut for the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, uh, for the Herrick Park Soccer Fields. There is money set aside for the town match. Um, and, uh, as you probably, if, if you're quite, uh, well aware of the hard usage, hard, hard usage that the soccer field gets at Herrick Park by not only the rec, uh, but also by, uh, evening players and people who practice and, um, it's, uh, been pretty much chewed up. So the vision here is to establish another field and then be able to leapfrog and go backwards and do restoration for the old field. Uh, but this is, this would be part A, uh, working on, yeah, as you're driving through into Herrick Park. It'd be fields like to be placed, eh, on the left-hand side and the open area. Mr. Rupert, would you like to add to that?
I think you can, yeah, I think you've covered it quite well.
Very good. Then, um, having said that, um, uh, we have, also, we have, uh, received the um, notification that we are being awarded the bronze medal for Sustainability Connecticut. So we're pleased to, to report that this evening as well. Uh, is there anything else I've forgotten?
I, I would just like to say that that was a lot of work by, by a lot of people. And it, it, it included, you know, people that aren't even currently staff members. We had to call on Amanda as a, as a former, uh, member of the Diversity Committee to help trace, you know, get through that section. And then it was very disappointed because it didn't seem like it was going to be enough. And I said, a- and then I got involved and said, hey, wait a minute, you need to understand that if this wasn't just a committee, there were actions that took place and there were results. And, and so I was able to meet with the individuals at Sustainable CT that were judging this application. And we managed to get the credits, what credit was due. And, you know, Mr. Teller seemed to have a great understanding of this process when the board voted to move forward for us to do this. I- and if, if you understand that, you will understand that there's a lot of moving pieces and it involves a lot of different things throughout the town. So I just want to commend the staff. This was a, a heavy task in a short period of time and our team pulled together and got this done. They, they really did.
I'd like to say thank you to, to Mr. Rupert for his leadership and for the town, uh, employees and community members. Because when you work together to get something like this done, sometimes also a little extra push needs to be done and it was taken care of. And because of that, we were able to get, uh, a medal for it. So thank you again, Mr. Rupert, and to all those who participated. Uh, moving on then, if, uh, no questions, uh, moving on then to the administrators' uh, officers' report, uh, starting off with the monthly report, sir.
Again, you've all gotten it. I assume everybody's taken a look at it. I can go over it if you want, but I would just ask if there's any questions, something in particular that you'd like to call out or go over.
Is there any questions for Mr. Rupert?
I have something I did.
Yes.
Addressed this, but, uh, the migration to, uh, the new domain.
So.
And the.
The reference that's being made here is, uh, taking the domain from the dot org, uh, which the town has been sharing with the uh, Board of Education's, uh, employees, uh, um, as the total government and the interest to uh, find ways to really tighten up our security. Uh, and then has moved us to a dot gov for this side of the town, uh, side. And, um, it's been a roller coaster. And would you like to report on that, Jim?
Sure. So, you know, the, these changes, you know, don't happen with perfection. You know, we've tried to plan out and make the changes as quickly and efficiently as we can. There have been some hiccups, but I think minimal hiccup of pick, hit, hiccups along the way. We are currently operating in the dot gov domain with security enhancements that include improved firewalls and things of that nature. We are now no longer piggybacking our licenses off the educational system, which was not appropriate. We now have our own licenses and we continue to work toward meeting the goals of the cybersecurity enhancements that were based on the audit that was done for us by Novus. And we've had a second audit that was completed by the Connecticut National Guard Cybersecurity Task Force. And they recognize the positive impacts that we've already made. And they recognize that they were in general agreement with the initiatives that we are moving forward to complete.
So I understand that the registrars made a request for some support periods during the election and they were denied. So could you explain that what, what happened there and what they were offered? Because they asked for, apparently they asked for a greater level of support into the night and they were only given a certain, a certain period of time of support. That's what I was told. And I don't understand why we wouldn't give them whatever support they needed on Election Day for whatever amount of time.
So their, their, their request did not come through the selectman's office. Their, their request went to a technician who was there to service their computers. He then spoke to me about it and he said, I have some ideas about what we can do. And he went to his leadership at Novus and discussed it with his leadership. He got a response from Novus that I shared with the registrars. And I got a reaction from the registrar's office and told them that I would continue to work on it on their behalf. I'm working on it on their behalf.
Right. What's Novus contractually obligated to do?
They, they're not contractually obligated to provide onsite, onsite support systems from six AM to twelve midnight. They work for multiple other towns and no town has ever requested that. They don't do it for any other town. But what we are, what we seem to have settled on, which appears to be acceptable to the registrar or voter's office is to have, um, on-call by phone service in case of an issue. And so I am working on that with Novus to try to make that happen.
That's pretty common that you have on-call service when the operations are going on. So I don't know why that would be followed.
That wa- that wasn't the initial.
Okay.
There's some communication issues going on. But it seems to have resolved and there seems to be, uh, an appreciation from the ROBs that it's going to work.
Okay.
This way.
I, I don't have a, I, I will, in, in all fairness, I don't have a, a response from Novus yet. But, but I'm working on, okay.
I would just like to add, uh, in talking, uh, with Mr. Rupert on the, uh, his September highlights, um, that, that there's a couple of pieces on here that I think are, goes back to some good government work. And that is using a, a very effective intern right now who is helping, uh, um, do some clerical stuff. That needs, it's been lovely to have, uh, time to have someone to get the, do some deep dive into the overhaul, the employee handbook. And also the efforts, uh, done by many to create a master calendar to keep us on track with the timelines and deadlines for required activities. Cause that's, you know, it's housekeeping, but it's, it's also difficult when you are very short staff. And it's wonderful to have someone, an extra set of hands, and he's very, very capable. So we're very grateful to have, uh, this gentleman working with us. Um, if there's any other questions regarding the, uh, September highlights. We did have, uh, an end of the summer, um, uh, review, I think of what's going on over at, uh, Indian Notch Park. And we'll have another one as we, um, look forward to next year, uh, is going to be one of my asks. And, um, uh, to make sure that we see how well Indian Notch Park worked this summer with all of the, um, scheduling and employees and items that we need to take care of. So I think Indian Notch Park is one of the jewels of the town. And, and I look forward to, uh, doing that in next month. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I have two things.
Mr. Teller?
First is, uh, we've, I think we've all gotten this call, Mr. Aldrich and the, uh, public support for the idea of increasing the first selectman's, um, compensation. I don't agree with much of what was said tonight. I do agree that the new, the job as it's going to be constituted at, at the, once the next term begins. Um, probably does warrant a different compensation. And that that should probably be on the agenda before the election because otherwise we'll sort of lose the opportunity to do it for four years.
In addressing that, I.
That's fair.
I'm sorry.
So I'd like to either put that on the next agenda or put it on the agenda for a special meeting. If we have the AP meeting, maybe.
I have asked for that, that to be on the AP meeting.
And I think that what I would like to do is ask Madam Chair and perhaps the last two first selectments to give us some sense of the amount of time that they feel that they devoted to the job, um, on average, weekly, monthly, yearly. Um, because I think that would give us a sense of what would be fair compensation for the physical aspect of the job itself as opposed to the intangible things that Mr. Aldrich and some of the other people spoke here.
That's a very.
Tonight.
A very awful asking.
I, I don't think that the charter created what they seem to think the charter created in this position.
For those of us that are with us this evening, Mr. Teller was a member of the Charter Commission.
Right. And I, and I, and this, the whole issue of what that position would be was very hotly debated. And neither Mr. Aldrich nor I got what we wanted. We got the, we got the horse camel elephant that we now have. And neither Mr. Aldrich nor I got what we wanted. We got the, we got the horse camel elephant that we now have. No offense, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I look very good in that.
But it is true that it, it, it's a job that now has aspects of potentially being a leader on the Board of Finance at the same time as your leader on the Board of Selectmen or on the Finance Commission as at, at the same time you're on the Board of Selectmen. And there are some other aspects that were added to it. So, um, I do think that in fairness to the next people who were brave enough to step, step up. And both of them are in the room tonight and I want to salute both of them for being willing to do that. That there ought to be some understanding that, that the job does take more physically and, and time-wise and emotionally than, um, it might have been in the past. And it wasn't a cakewalk in the past, as I know our current, uh, chair knows. So it would be wise for us to address that quickly. And I think the best way to do that would be to ask the three most recent incumbents to give a sense of what the time is. And if they think that the new position is going to take more time, do they have any sense of what that might be?
Thank you. Uh, that's a very good ask and I will reach out to, uh, or have, uh, and have the department reach out. We have two of us are on the boards. We have, uh, Mr. Eric, uh, Mr. Mora, uh, as a eighteen-year veteran of the seat. Uh, and, uh, Mrs. Pierog, who, who held the seat for four years. Um, that's a very good thoughtful thing to do and thank you for that suggestion.
And the second thing I would like to do, um, is, okay, um, we had a speaker tonight who talked once again about the fact that we are voting in a religious building. I continue to believe that that is a terrible mistake. And I would like us to put on the agenda a, a discussion of asking, a formal ask to the Board of, of Education that they make the schools available, um, for not this election, cause it's too late, but for each and every af- election after until the town finds another solution. And then we task, um, the town administrator, although I know he has many tasks already, to find a solution that does not have us voting in an adjunct building of a church. Because however others may feel, I, I have a visceral reaction to it. I know that Ms. Hearn does too. And I'm not, I'm quite sure we're not the only ones.
We appreciate the, the, um, the repeated comments, um, and we do know who, and it has been on the, uh, legislature voters radars as well. But we also have not only general elections for those who are listening, but we also have, um, referendums and, um, and, uh, could be a charter question that could be a, a special election.
You have a handle.
Uh, at this time, we have a hand up. Mr. Armita?
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to, uh, agree with Adam on the last point he made, uh, about holding an election in a property owned by a church, whether it be that church, the Protestant church, the, uh, the church in the center of town. I don't think it's appropriate for an election for a community of peoples of different faiths to be asked to vote in a, a, a place of worship. I just don't think it's appropriate. And I've said that before, so it's nothing new coming from me. Uh, on the second thing, uh, Adam spoke to about, uh, getting this, uh, potential raise, which I do support. Uh, I, I have my own ideas about how much, uh, but I do believe that we should get it done prior to the installation of the next board. Cause right now we have an opportunity to do it. Like, we, we voted for the Board of Selectmen to have a raise in January because it wouldn't affect anybody that's sitting and not reelected when we voted on it. And I think having the two people or having two parties running for first selectmen who don't serve on the Board of Selectmen currently, it's the proper time to take that matter up and get it finalized while we're not voting for our own salary increase, if you know what I'm getting at. Uh, so I think, uh, you know, maybe the next special meeting to do the, the AP report or something. We, we definitely need to get this done if we're going to do it prior to seating the next board.
Uh, at this time, that's a very good comment. At this time, uh, there, uh, this chair will commit to, um, putting that on the ejectus. The, the salary question discussion and possible action on the, uh, a special meeting that we will be holding October seventeenth at twenty twenty-three. So it's imperative that you all please look at your calendar. I would like to do it late in the day as I am, um, unavailable during the day, daytime. Uh, is there an, an interest in ho- holding the meeting for perhaps a six thirty or seven PM time?
I can be available.
I have Mr. DePietro also nodding. Mr. Teller saying yes. Mr. Armita, you have?
The seventeenth, seventeenth at what time?
Uh, six thirty or seven, which would.
I can do either.
Would six thirty be all right for everyone?
I can make.
And I, we will let you know where the places, I presume it will be over at. I don't, I don't know where it is. I don't have the magic book in front of me. So we set six thirty. And.
Can we go back to other before we adjourn?
Absolutely. My apologies.
So one of the things that, and I don't know if we talked about it at a regular Board of Ed meet, uh, at a regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, but I know I've had conversations with at least some of you about this issue, uh, with regard to, um, title fraud that has been happening across the state and across the country. Um, we learned something this week, uh, that we have availability through the system that we use for title searches and so on and so forth, known as our COT system. That we could enhance our ability to detect those things through their service for a one-time fee of seven hundred dollars and twenty-five dollars a month. Um, to me, that seems like a no-brainer.
May I ask the board if they'd be, have an interest in placing that on the, uh, meeting on the seventeenth as well?
That would go into the town clerk's, um, budget or would it go into the?
So, so the town clerk does not have money to implement that right now. So if we decided we wanted to implement it now, it would come out of the administration budget. But it would be an add in the town clerk's budget for next year.
Sure.
Well, then we will add that to the agenda as well, Mr. Rupert. Make a note of that one. Is there anything else you'd like to add under other, sir? I apologize if I jumped over.
I have, I have nothing more.
Very good. Uh, for the good of the cause, uh, for the board, I would just like to make one announcement and that is we need a, a, a rain dance to hold up the rain for Saturday, please. Uh, we have the, um, the three-year plan, uh, uh, encampments at, um, our special heritage park, uh, for the Rochambeau, uh, celebration. And there is a one o'clock, uh, dedication for the storyboard signs that are now on a permanent location. So you're welcome and invited to please come. Please come to the encampment. Please wear your rain gear and that may hold the rain off. If you bring your umbrellas, maybe it'll hold the rain off. Um, um, and a very special thank you to the Farm Commission, to Arlene Piano, to Patrick's, what's his name? I'm sorry, I just lost his last name through the hours, uh, who has been the coordinator, uh, for, for the reenactors. And for all the town services that have come forward, that have helped, have been with us for multiple meetings, have offered their services. And a thank you to Dick Noran for providing, uh, cut and split wood for the reenactor's fire pits. So, um, and others who are donating, uh, other items. I'm sorry, I don't have a list in front of me. You always make a mistake if you single out one, but I just did. Um, a lifelong present. Uh, anything else? Uh, I, I, I don't believe there is any. So we will see you on the seventeenth at six thirty PM somewhere in town. And, um, uh, at this time, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a, a motion and a second. Mr. DePietro, all in favor, say aye. Chief, well, thank you for being here. And to Linda, thank you for all you do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
At seven, eight twenty-three.